Okay, did everybody have a chance to review the agenda?
Did I move to approve the agenda?
I second that. Kate's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Is there any further discussion? I think we'll put County Attorney on at 10:30.
At 10:30 you'll have an executive session for litigation.
Very good. Any other discussion on the agenda? Seconded to approve the agenda. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Either we have a chance to review the minutes from the last...
Yeah, I'm going to approve the minutes from 19th, 26th, and 26th.
Second.
29th.
Any other discussion on the agenda? Kate's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the 19th, 26th, and 29th. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. I'm just a little curious. Yeah. Did everybody have a chance to review the vouchers?
I just got a question.
One more second. Any other discussion? Kate's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the 19th, 26th, and 29th.
So, I'm, um, my recommendation is to approve it. I spoke with the sheriff last week and we'll make a general adjustment. It was coded incorrectly. We'll make sure it's taken out of Sheriff and get attention.
This, okay.
But, so.
Cause that was my question.
My recommendation is to approve it. It was coded as inmate trust fund, but that's not a general adjustment for beneficial. It's not for the benefit of the man. So, it's taken out of, um, talk to the sheriff. We're just going to do a general adjustment. After today's. So, I appreciate that.
Is that what, that was my question?
Any further discussion on the vouchers? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Motion curious.
Ian, did you make that motion?
Jeb, I did agenda, Jeb did vouchers. So, we do vouchers?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, did with Jeb, for sure. Thank you. Sorry, all these usually go to you first.
They're all right.
I know.
Screwed up, everybody.
I've got enough paper though.
Want some more?
Yeah. Give me more, I'm sorry.
You don't enclose captioning TV, cause I do that more and more all the time. When somebody does it, they call it raspberry or something. I don't know where they got that.
Yeah. Yeah, we do too. It's kind of nice to watch TV on mute, you know? Not that being a loud voice.
I always thought it was crazy for a long time. What are you going to read the TV? Cause you know, subtitle movies, I wouldn't watch those.
I wouldn't either.
But now it's like, what are they saying? Hi Stephanie.
Hi Jeb.
How are you?
I'm dandy. How are you?
Good.
Oh, look at you.
Oh, hi, look at you. So, over there.
Look at that, round and round the merry-go-round. Still sitting in the same spot when we come back.
It's reassuring. It's very reassuring.
I'll take it.
Okay.
I'll take it.
I hope it is for you.
More than you know.
Do you have that grant agreement?
No.
Yeah, well, should be coming up.
And this is one that, um, the undersheriff does all the work on it. And so, it's a standard state agreement. The only thing that changes is the deliverables, which is, um, basically law enforcement, presence for certain holidays. And it's high visibility enforcement sort of days. And so, NHTSA, National Highway Safety Traffic Administration. They have these goals of DUI enforcement, C-belt enforcement. They pay overtime for deputies to specifically work, um, looking for those violations. And so, this just allows overtime, um, to those deputies. So, it's a standard state grant agreement. The only thing that changes is the amount and the deliverables.
And it's reimbursed after?
Yes. We put the guys out on the road. They, when they submit their time card, we have a code that's specific for this grant. Believe it or not, this is the easiest one to get reimbursement from.
And that's how they track it? Is that why?
Yep. And they do, they have to do reports and they have to submit copies of citations or warnings to issue to show they have a certain number of contacts. Because if NHTSA's paying for it, they want to make sure you're actually out doing it.
I would move to approve a grant agreement and authorize, oh wait. That's the right one. It'd be.
Yeah.
Author, uh, between NHTSA and Platte County. And authorize undersheriff McConaughey to sign.
I'm checking it.
Kate's been moved and seconded to approve the grant agreement to authorize Sheriff McConaughey to sign. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm a little curious. Okay, we'll move on to road and bridge.
Morning gentlemen. Um, so last, apologize. I also, uh, lost, lost track of time last week and should have sent this out on Thursday. But, for the last three days, we did, uh, we did chip seal on Grange. We got that done and taken care of. That's kind of rough. Just rough prices between what, what it cost us, which was, uh, well, obviously being the most, but, um, that was oil and chips, which was the bulk of the, uh, the cost. And then we did some, uh, sign replacements. So, we did also get in, um, all those signs finally from the grant that we did here and out.
Nice. So. What's the chip seal run per mile, Chris?
It's right at about, a little over forty-eight thousand.
A mile?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I've gone up, you know, we used to be doing that five years ago, so, um, that's good.
Yep, it's.
Sorry.
Oil, oil was actually a little cheaper this year than last year, so it was refreshing to see.
Yeah.
But chips went up a little bit, so. But, uh, yep, so we got that knocked out. We, uh, Waylock was nice enough to loan us a chunk of field and that's where we stopped how everything got that restored. The, uh, the last thing we'll have is, yeah, so we go back and seed that in, uh, March, April, end of March or early April. So, we'll go see that from just pasture grass.
How do you do that?
Uh, we have a seeder that hooks on the back tractor and just, yeah, let's see. So, basically what we'll do is we'll go out there and we'll kind of till it a little bit and break it up and then throw seed out there and then just take a harrow and drag it back in, so.
And over rain?
Yes, and break for rain. Or maybe we'll have a lot of snow and the ground will be nice and moist.
Yeah.
So, but yep, we did get the signs in, so we started putting a couple of those out already. It, uh, it was like five hundred signs that came in.
Wow.
And that was all from the state. And the vast majority of them are speed limits, advanced warning signs for curves and things like that. But, um, once we get the mowing done, then we did end up picking up, had a really good guy come in and was looking for a part-time job and.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was very refreshing, so we had a good talk with him. And so, we got him out in a, uh, out in the marsh. Steve met him.
Is he one of these homeless guys that stay in a window?
No, he's got a house and he's, he's pretty good feather.
Okay.
No tents pitched behind the shop for a quick.
You gotta do is pay me here, give me a spot to pitch a tent. There you go.
Yeah, yeah. Work for, um, Ward.
Yeah, yeah.
No, so once we, uh, yeah, once we get mowing done though, um, we'll probably have him start putting in a lot of signs and doing those things. So, he seemed, he seems to be pretty good. Hopefully he'll kind of stick around and.
Putting up the brand-new targets.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yep, but we gotta try. Um, we also get our, did get our sign boards in. We haven't put them all together yet, but that'd be on the, uh, that'd be on the list for next month, getting those in. And then we start putting out some different things if, uh, you know, if we're going to do a bigger project, people know we're close, et cetera. Um, Seville Creek, Culver, to one north of thirty-four. We got that kind of cleaned up. There was a pretty good washout there. So, we built a retaining wall and tried to kind of shore that side up a little bit, so that should stop. But eventually we will have to replace that culvert. It's a little short and it's very seasoned, so it's just, it'll be time. And when we go to do that one, that's going to be, that's going to be a challenge because, well, shut that chunk of the road off. There's no way to.
No way.
Half of it. So, that'll be a little bit of a challenge. I think we have a, we have a little bit more time on it, but I don't want to wait forever. And then we'll see if the Irrigation District is willing to help, uh, cost share some of that. I did talk to Nathan Graves and they were willing to help provide equipment, like an excavator, which would be a big help. So, even if they provide the equipment and even an operator, that's huge. So, we'll see how that, uh, relationship continues to blossom. I did get a call, um, about Glendo and went up and really just drove a lot of the roads up there. And they were, they were fine. They worked back. Uh, one of the, one of the concerns was Costco's pretty narrow, but it's, it's almost twenty feet wide, like, in, in spots, so. The rest of the roads, some of them do get a little narrow, but there's not much you can do when the fence lines are, you know, so, but, I don't know. I talked to the, uh, the mail, the postmaster up there and she said they've got new issues. So, we're, we're trying to keep a good eye on it, try to give Glendo good focus and attention, but I guess those roads were really not too shabby at all, but, uh, so that was that. The only, the only issue in Glendo, which I did talk to Morrell last week, is Ridge Road, that first little quarter mile, what goes there, if you've got there, lay down yard there. It is, it is impressive how many vehicles are just in there. It's a massive site and a lot of, a lot of trucks, so that first bit. But I'll talk to Morrell more and I know she's working on that. She granted them a temporary road use agreement, I think, and we're going to work on that. More details to get a good restoration of it, of that.
So, did they, did they give you a list of roads that they're using throughout the county or just that one?
It's, uh, so they're, they're, the main one that they're using is a ridge to get in and out of their lay-down yard, then they're hauling poles up ridge in their entirety. And then Ridge, Elkhorn, um, Horseshoe Creek are the names that they use that are county roads.
And I know there's some south here that they've been using too, so.
They were out on, um, Antelope Creek.
Yep.
And the most of, when they, when they haul, it's not really too, too bad. They have the, the longer roads, obviously, but their drivers seem to be doing pretty good. It's the, the biggest concern that I have really is just that part of where they have two ducks.
Is it, is it holding up after you guys graded it?
For a short amount of time.
For a short amount of time? That's part of the things that we need to talk to them about, about. That will be part of Morrell's conversation about that, because that's, it will have to be something that they move off their sofa for, you know what I mean?
Yes.
So, I need to get with Morrell and see where that is going.
Yep. The rest of, uh, and the rest of Ridge, where they, pretty much, once you get past their entries and then right up that first hill that they take off out of, the rest of it is kind of, that road's just kind of, you know, in condition and things like that. But, yeah, where they, where they want it stopped, so. That's all right. Well, but yeah, we'll keep working on that and then we'll get a good restoration for that for it, because it definitely, we'll definitely need it.
That restoration probably. Well, I don't know what the length of their haul is. I don't know how, you know, their construction period of, what is that?
They're going to, uh, how far are they hauling?
No, from when they start hauling to when they think they're going to be kind of tied up, done.
I don't remember off the top of my head. I know one, I talked to one of the Black Hills people and they gave me a potential end date, but I cannot remember. But once they get done hauling all the poles, then they got to put in all the wire and string that and everything else. And I'm not sure about that portion of it. But I think they're supposed to be done hauling poles by either, it was either October or end of October.
Okay.
I don't, don't remember.
I'm just thinking about winter and, you know, the conditions of that road and how that can change with moisture, frost, tues, and, you know, whatever.
Yeah. No, that's fair. And I'll give it a fair, we'll, we'll talk about, maybe there's some things they need to do in the interim.
Yeah, their responsibility does not end when a pole is done.
Right.
By long shots.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, sir. So. But yeah, so for the last.
Yes, exactly.
Month, that was, you know, chip seal's been our big, big focus and big, uh, big attention. We got it wrapped up and done and survived. And then, so the next thirty days, we're going to do, uh, the paint strikings coming in, like I said earlier. That should be seventh and the eighth, they'll do a hundred and nine miles of road. And that'll be, that'll be nice. Get some of those stripes on Lake Shore and some of those other places that are in need of it. Grange was not on the list, but we're going to try and get that added. And just make sure we get that striped and then that road can be closed out and completely finished. So, um, then we still got some dirt patching to do. Fish Creek, Deer Creek, Gray Rocks has got a couple of little spots. And, uh, was up on Glendo Park and right, right after, I don't think it was the, uh, it just, it's just a random weird soft spot that kind of showed up there in the asphalt. It's right. When you're heading north, it's right before you get to where they're hauling with the silicon mine, so I don't think it related to them at all. But it was just kind of like randomly.
Yeah.
Bring a little dip in the road, so we'll get that squared away. So, there's a couple of spots left up there and then Fish Creek, that's, no, that's going to be a big focus for us and that's going to take us a long time, several days. Just trying to get cleaned up a little bit and it's just a beat, beat.
Decades.
Yes, so, well, we'll work on that and get those squared up. So, we have a, you know, we'll have a couple more rounds of dirt patching to do. The, uh, Southern Culver on Seville Creek, we'll get that, I put that on twice, sorry. But I got a quote from Kroll's for concrete and what they think we can do. And I think what we'll end up doing is basically what we had talked about, putting some fencing over all that rocks, some wire mesh in there and then concrete over the top, give it a good slurry to try and just pack it in, because especially of that last flood, the, the volume of water that came down that thing was just a big part of all. And there's no way we can really just, we'd, we'd have to put in somebody too to try and stop that. So, we'll just concrete it really good and it should, should hold pretty well. And it'll be concrete on both sides and then over the top of the road and it'll just be a good, good crossing and if it goes over, it goes over.
I don't know what else you can do.
I don't, I don't either.
It's active god, is what they call it.
Mm-hmm.
Force measure.
Yeah. So, and then we got that one towed to base one to, uh, treat gravel road width. We're looking at a, a mile stretch on Jefferson, I think. It takes a lot of traffic. It's a good, close area to look at and assess and see how it actually holds up. And so, we'll get that. We got the water trailer, Beal. Impressively fabricated, a very nice spray bar on that. It's actually pretty impressive. Yes, that, he's, he's incredible. So, so we'll do that and the nice thing is, we'll do that end of September.
Is that the section from Seville Creek to High Towner?
Uh, no, it'll be on Jefferson's here.
I mean, yeah, on Jefferson, but from Seville Creek to.
Oh, um, no, it'll be on this side. So, I think we're looking at, um.
Cause it's really heavily used too.
Yep. So, we'll, we'll pick one in there.
I'm just curious of which area was in.
Yeah, I think we're going to do more on the east, eastern side of Jefferson, but one of those stretches we got all, because that one does take quite a bit. And it did take a beating when they were doing that bridge down at my first hole too, with all the detours and everything, but.
Yeah.
But the nice thing is the, uh, the representative from Team Lab will come down and be there throughout the entire application process. And it, it won't take us very long to get it done, but he'll be there to make sure it's all applied properly and then we can kind of keep an eye on it and see if it is something that we want to invest in the future on some other roads. I had a person call, uh, off of Costco Road, actually, very nice guy. He was asking if we could mag chloride some of, uh, Costco Road and tell me we're exploring other options, because of mag chloride just being tangled. So, so we'll see, uh, but we'll see how it holds up and we'll keep a good eye on it. And if it is something that's worth investing in, we'll look at doing more of that in the future. And then, yeah, just mowing, trying to get as much mowing wrapped up as we can. We got a mower in Chumwood right now, trying to get the Wheatland area finished up and then we'll put up in the, in the, get those all done.
Chris, which road did you say you're doing base one?
We're going to look at Jefferson. That's, uh, one mile stretch on Jefferson.
How much, um, how much work you got to do ahead of that application? Is there, do they require that it's, you know, freshly graded? Just, I mean, I don't understand.
Disced up?
Yeah.
It's disced up almost, maybe.
So, we'll go in and we'll rip up, uh, they prefer four inches, three to four inches. So, we'll kind of rip up a section of three to four inches of road and then we'll spray it. And then basically relay it and then spray it again, uh, pack it and spray it one more time. So, but they, uh, you try to get it in three to four inches into the ground. And then, um, that spot's kind of sandy, so we'll haul in a little bit of millings, which they highly recommend using millings. They just kind of helps really bind. So, we, and we have quite a bit of millings out at the pit that we can use, so we'll haul in a little bit. So, there'll be a little prep work, but it won't be, uh, it won't be too bad.
I'm just curious, because, you know, if that stuff isn't done ahead of time, then the success of the, the product could be compromised.
Right.
And then they're going to lead you through that. You, you're all over it, so, yeah.
Yes, sir. No, he'll, their, uh, their representative will be there from start to finish. So, we'll, we'll haul in the material and he's clear as, he's clearing his calendar for, um, like the last week in September. And then, you know, we'll get it rolled in and packed. And then the walking rolls have been just fantastic. So, Glendo now, every, every, every blade hand has a walking roll and they, Buzzy's been super thrilled with it and Glendo's super thrilled with it and they're, I think they're making a, a pretty good difference. I know it's hard to, especially as dry as it's been, to work with everything, but yeah, they've been, it's been really helpful in those things. And then we got, everybody now has a, uh, we got our last six way hand not too long ago, so everyone now has a straight plow and a deep plow. So, that should cut down on some of their passes. Mark Williams sent up in Glendo was ecstatic to have something that can plow straight and not just use a deep plow all the time.
Yeah.
So, I think we're, we're getting there. We're getting geared up and getting good.
Did you, uh, did you see what they did on Tunnel Road?
I have not made it up there yet. Mark and, uh, Mark and I are both planning on taking a quick trip up there and giving that a, giving that a look. And then I want to call their road and bridge department and chit chat with them.
It's a sales pitch for your coal planters, what it is.
Yeah.
I mean, every morning the guys changing teeth on it, but they made that road actually into something you can haul it.
Yeah, I would, I would, yeah. We, we talked about, uh, just taking a trip up there and, and going and seeing it and then, you know, I want to call their, their office.
Three or four guys, they've probably been working on it for two weeks and they've cut the whole road. I mean, it's, it's a very nice road now. It's a really nice road.
Surprising.
Yeah. I mean, I didn't think you could do anything, but they were grinding up down six inches. They had a dozer, a, uh, the skister, a grader, a water truck and then, um, a roller. And it, it's surprising. For as much money as they spent in it, which is not very much, they've actually totally reclaimed that road.
Nice.
Yeah.
Yep. No, that's on our, uh, that's on our list of things to do this week.
That's a tough one to do, too.
Yes, that was a tough one to do.
Yeah.
Yeah. They, they got a little, I was wondering if Dale was running the mower there. You see where they took the, like, top four inches off a couple of big boulders, you know?
Yeah.
But I give Dale crap, but he's, he's awesome.
Yep, he is. No, we got the, uh, the new guy on the mower and then Brian, who's also the new guy there. They're both on the mower.
Good deal.
Just got to watch out for telephone, that is tools.
Yeah.
They're surprisingly.
People let you know if you hit them.
Yes.
You don't even have to look for them.
No. And, and they know when they hit them.
Yeah.
I don't know.
She's got a rainbow ribbon.
Mm-hmm.
Great.
Yeah. And, and we did, we did hit one the other day, but I called, uh, called the guy out and wore me. And I was like, how many of these are active? He's like, you know, honestly, Wheatland surprisingly has a ton of active landmines still. He said, like, for some reason, the Wheatland area is still filled with landmines. And a lot of people want to do this.
There's a lot of.
Look at the average age of the county.
Yes.
I mean, that's, that's it.
I didn't want to, I didn't want to, that was kind of what he, he said. I didn't want to say it too fast. So, I mean, yeah, no.
It's just the population.
Mm-hmm. And most people still have their landlines, so it was kind of interesting and, and also just good to know, because sometimes when we're doing something like telephone line, you know, they actually do. There's still a lot that people use, so.
I can remember when there used to not be phone service in part of the county.
Yep.
And I'm not that old.
By the way.
I'm so surprised, I thought you said landmines.
I remember like, what, what war was in Wheatland? Landmines. I was like, the other time I was off on site.
Ah, nevermind.
First day back, you know, I don't know.
I'll, I'll keep landmines in there.
It's exciting.
Road, road bridge reported landmines on Tunnel Road.
I know, boy, the landmines.
Chris, your engineering speed is going to change dramatically.
I want some photos.
Need your mind sweepers to help?
Yeah, they're one more call, forty-five degree angle.
And then you had a request to help out Hales, did you?
Uh, yes, sir. Yep, we have, uh, Dale's over there today and tomorrow. Help, help with them and then, um, based on the rate that we all agreed on, that's what we'll, he's keeping track of his hours and we'll send them a bill of duty for that.
Good deal.
Got any other questions? That's all I have, gentlemen.
You got any encroachment licenses that's applicable? I mean, tell me.
No, sir, not today.
If you had any or not.
Not today.
Okay.
Thanks, Chris.
Yes, sir. Thank you, gentlemen.
Have a great week.
You too.
It still feels like Monday.
Yeah. Well, hopefully the rest of the week is Fridays.
Yeah.
I don't see that.
Wishful thinking.
Wishful thinking.
Yeah.
Kate, we'll move on to emergency management.
Tough feat to follow there. I mean, that was pretty good.
Yeah, landmines that I know of.
Maybe when you have an encroachment, that might be.
I said the big portion of my, my last couple of weeks has been just the MPG award. That was the, the biggest joy of it all. Been trying to do a lot of things with, uh, online trainings, you know, school starting back up again. Done some trainings with SISA and FEMA with school preparedness, school safety. I know last year at the end of school year, we had all sat down with the District One and District Two superintendents and we're trying to get some plans to really get more involved in schools. I haven't heard from them lately, but, uh, I do want to make sure that that continues on, because, you know, I, I look at where we've been, you know, really the good lists we've gotten from our school resource officers. Those two have done amazing in the schools. I think that's a huge step. And just want to kind of build on that. Really just get in there, help teachers feel safe, help the kids in a safer environment. Cause I mean, it's, it's a world we live in now that it's just, they can happen anywhere, so let's be ready for it. Like I said, this tall grass exercise coming up end of the week, that's going to be, I'm excited for that one. That one's usually pretty good. I guess I didn't see you guys last month, so just kind of update on that one fifty-four fire up in July third at the Monmer, one oh-six area-ish. Uh, we did open the FSA on that one. We just kind of left it open to see where we're at. I did get a cost share agreement done with BLM. They're going to take care of federal side of, we'll take care of the local side. But we do have to get our ship tickets and everything in for that, so. I just have a couple Glendo guys that are hard to rankle up, but we'll get that in and get it done. Sheila's been very excited to teach the new guy the right way to do it down there, state forestry, so we'll get her done and bad part about that one, but also a good part is, is that, that's pretty much, that one's just going to cover our floor costs for the year. So, you know, that, God willing, we don't have any other problems to worry about it, but that'll be a good one and it's a good one for me to start out on.
So, will we be paying personnel or anything out of that?
There shouldn't be any personnel. There shouldn't be any personnel pay out of it, but I won't know until I get final numbers from what the, that hand crew cost. That's gonna be the big push out of it. And.
And when you said floor cost, didn't they do away with the floor cost?
Yeah. I mean, we still have to cover up to a certain point with this one, but.
How many total acres did that burn?
Let's see, that one was seven acres of BLM and off the top of my head, I think it was twenty acres of private. So. And that one, I mean, I really absolutely hated bringing in that hand crew with that. That hand crew saved us a lot of time and money. With that location, that could have been really bad. Yeah, we're working on that. Like I said, they've been more than accommodating working with me and I think they kind of got the right idea, you know, train them right the first time, then you don't have to worry about it the second time, so hopefully we're getting good on that. Well, as Jeb saw last week, I had a bunch of people in my office there, we had Bureau back in doing a non-functional exercise and I really was not prepared to have that many people show up. I, I put them in my little conference area over there and was thinking, well.
You had overflow.
Yeah, absolutely overflow. And they, they showed up, that was exciting. I saw cars from Illinois, Missouri, I mean, I apparently had some decent higher ups there. But they put on a good, good show and they want to do this yearly, so that will be, that'll be good. But what they did is they essentially tested out their emergency protocols and then tested out their emergency systems. As in all good trainings, there was a major FOPA where they told the lawn shift of their on-call that they were doing this and activating emergency protocol, but the second shift could have passed along, so got kind of interesting for a second. But that's how you learn, I guess. And see, my big portion here for the next month or two is going to be, they got the TYRA figured out and do October 31st, but it's full TYRA, so I'll be talking to everybody. I think we shored up replans for that. Just kind of finalize that and get that, make sure that's gonna work. I had Terry come in and kind of show me the ropes, cause no disrespect to anybody, but that system that they have you put in is just the absolute worst I've ever seen in my life, it doesn't make any sense one bit. So he kind of gave me a crash course on that and showed me how to input and hopefully not completely lose all my white hair pulling it out. I'm gonna be putting on an L E P C here the third week in September and that's gonna be a big portion where I'm gonna try to get people in and talk to them about that TYRA. I guess the final thing I really have is heartble mitigation, looks like it's going fairly decent up there. Aaron is working on that FMAG, getting that finalized for that twenty acres in town. And then the Camp Guernsey Fire Academy, they did some work up there with some landowners in the town and really sounds like did a good job, need to get up in there and drive around, but people seem to be pretty happy with it. So, good progress on heartble, which has been a much needed project for years, so.
On that EMPG grant, the deadline for application is the 30th of this month?
Yes. Yep, and like I said, the, the award thankfully went up about fifteen thousand and essentially is the paperwork I got says that, you know, whatever you want to put in on it is gonna go between the coordinator and what the county commissioners might see on that.
So I did, I did send you an email back with the sheet, I don't know if you need anything other than this, but I did email you back the show are fifty percent share on salary and rent. It exceeds the amount of the award, but.
It does, but, you know, honestly, that is frankly thirty-nine thousand more than I was expecting to get this year and every bit of that helps, so. And you did send me that sheet?
I did.
Awesome, that'll be a good start.
I sent it Wednesday.
On Thursday, I was chasing fires in rain, which was a beautiful sight to do.
Yeah.
So if you need, if you need anything else or any help, look it up.
Yeah, I need to check, make sure, cause I didn't see that and that was in office pretty much all Thursday morning, but that doesn't mean I didn't miss it somewhere, so. But yeah, I figured probably split that up between salary, platler and rent for salary rent, see what we could out of it. If you guys had any other ideas and I was willing to entertain any other thoughts, those three seemed to be the most.
And I had only put in the salary and rent, but I think adding platler is probably a good idea.
And they did a, a pretty big study down there with, you know, who everybody uses for emergency alerting. They, they tried to get information from every county and I think that was a big push of why they, they want to add that into the EMPG if they can, you know, help alleviate some of the costs. Any questions?
That was the only question I had was on EMPGs. Thanks.
Thank you.
See if I can stand up now when I fall asleep.
Yeah, I know, I'm making a fool out of myself.
Too late.
Thank you. I miss seeing you around.
Do you have any updates from the town of Wheatland?
I just got back into town. I was with all my kids down in Arizona. I was in Arizona watching the haboob come in. I got flashbacks of Iraq, I was in that.
Really?
We just got to the hotel and just got upstairs and settled in and turned the news on, I'm like, huh. And my son's laying in the bed closest to the window, he goes, here it comes. And thankfully, we're in the hotel and deciding where to go eat and we decided pretty quickly it's gonna be downstairs. I've already been in those things in tents and Humvees and I was quite content to be in a solid building with air conditioning and.
How long did those last?
The haboob, when it came through the, the actual dust storm, was about fifteen, twenty minutes, but behind that was the rain and wind that came with it. So it went on for close to an hour. But we just went downstairs and got some food and kicked back and I'm like, I'm not going nowhere in this.
How much rain does it take to settle that kind of dust?
It, they got a fair amount. I didn't actually see the report of how much rain they got, but it was a fair amount of rain. I mean, even my truck with the camper shell locked up and my boys stuffing totes on the inside, not much dust got into the totes, but there was a little bit in the back of the truck. So overall, it wasn't too bad from my standing, but a lot of downwind, a lot of down branches and trees and stuff. But now he's settled in college and, well, for now, we'll see what he needs next. But now it's the honeydew list, cause we're empty nesters and.
There you go, first place you come is the commissioner's room, congratulations.
Well, I guess he was going on.
Yeah.
I miss our bantering, so.
I agree, Sixteenth Street's still on track.
I will find out when I leave here, cause I have to go run a couple of errands and swing by Tom Hall and see what I've been missing for the last week. Cause I told him, like, any calls, don't worry about me unless you need me to dial in for something. Between Moab and.
Yeah.
And Navajo Reservation with minimal coverage. Had to stop at Winslow though. Something might have flatbeded forward and I don't know.
Give you a, nevermind. What's going on with PCED?
Well, to answer your question for the Sixteenth Street project, I had a meeting with Tabitha on Friday and as of Friday, everything was still on track, so. Um, PCED world is good. I were working with the Wheatland Volunteer Fire Department to help them get a grant through the Black Hills Energy Line, which is good. I've been meeting with all of our members, that's my goal, we have ninety members in my first three months and I've been learning a ton. If you guys ever want to hear offline what the impediments are to some people facing growth in our county, I'd love to share what I've learned, I've learned a ton. We've lost, I think, three businesses, I've, I've learned this week, just alone, so hopefully I can help.
Lost, you mean?
But I've, that have announced their closing, the Wild Wisk announced, Dan Breck announced, obviously, those two are for retirement, so it's not. And then one that I don't know if I can say yet if it's been made public, but they're really struggling with local buy-in. They get most of their business from outside of the county, so that's an interesting of how we can help there, I don't know. And then our next meeting will be the third Wednesday of this month and I want, I'm hoping the Industrial Siting Commission will come in and give the same presentation she did to you guys, I think it'd be beneficial for the board to hear, so that's kind of what's going on in our world.
Some good, some good.
Yeah.
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 You do have Tricia online?
Is she online? Morning, Tricia.
Good morning, happy second Tuesday, Monday of the week.
We're, we're just a little bit ahead of schedule.
Thinking today's Monday too.
Yeah.
So you're behind schedule, actually.
Yeah.
Isn't that what happens in a short week, you're always a day, you're, you're, it's the longest short weeks ever. Hope everyone had a great and restful Labor Day, we sure did. We did a little, we were up at Donking Day, so that was fun. A certain, a certain someone qualified for NFR again this year, so we'll be going in November. Yay, little plug there for that, you know. Anyway, the, our updates are just that, you know, we're going strong, visiting and getting all the things. In September this month, we're having the Oktoberfest, it's the 25th, from five to seven downtown. Jen Stone's heading that up, she's doing a great job getting that all wrapped up and ready to go. Brooklyn's Tavern is doing something at seven to ten, so separate from the Chamber, they're doing their own thing, but they'll, hopefully the crowds will stay around for that too, that'll be a lot of fun. He's got some good things planned. And then, let's see what else. October first, Megan Degenfelder's coming, we had talked about this last time, so you'll be all getting the emails from that, I'm inviting you to that and then a registration link to register for that, to come by. We're doing that at Spaghetti West, for, it's called Coffee and Condo. And it'll be good, it'll be really good, it'll be a good time for people to have a one-on-one with Megan and, you know, she's our state superintendent of schools, so any, you know, questions or comments you have, would be a great time to share that with her. Our plat, our Tour de Platte Committee meetings are still, or our twenty-fifth, two-hundred-and-fifty celebration is still going. We're meeting every two weeks. We have a lot of activity within the, the members that we do have, the committee members. Last week was a dead week, I think everyone was just getting ready for the holidays, so we'll keep you a prize in that. The cities, each of the towns have their, until September fifteenth to get me their budget, so that we can go forward with applying for that grant and getting some money to help them do whatever projects they think they want to do for their little town. The committee itself will help facilitate that. The Tour de Platte, of course, is what we're doing here with the Chamber and that's on track and we have a huge resource in Zane Walker, he's from Camp Guernsey and he's also with High Plains Drones and just, just a very, very enthusiastic young man and has lots of great ideas. So the Tour de Platte is coming, y'all, and it's gonna be good. So we'll see how things pan out here next week with the committee meeting on Tuesday as far as if there's any, I haven't had any of the towns yet say anything, so maybe they're just getting their stuff together and getting it submitted, so that's it for us.
So we have you on our agenda for the semi-quintcentennial committee?
Yes, that's the committee I'm talking about, yep. The Tour de Platte is inside that committee.
And Tricia?
Go ahead.
Our understanding is the purpose of that committee really is to qualify for grants through the state for the two-hundred-and-fiftieth celebration. The question would be whether the commissioners need to appoint people to that committee or not in order for you to apply for those grants?
We, we do have to have appointments, yes.
And then when, when would be your drop dead date to have those people appointed?
Um, well, anytime you guys want to appoint them, you can. I'm still, I'm sending it out in email to them this week, just to, just to reiterate that, you know, if they're going to be on this committee, they need to show up. And so, you know, I brought snacks last time and I just was shocked that they didn't come. I know, you told me that if anyone could do it, I could and I had them, but you know, I think everyone just got busy with, you know, the, the end of summer and, and so I think we'll be back on track next week.
So there's not a hard date, is it?
No, September fifteenth is when the towns have to give me their budget, so, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, we're still moving forward and the committees, the committee is assembled, so I'm just waiting for clarification on a couple of members that haven't showed. So just asking, just waiting for clarification from them on whether or not they're gonna continue.
So Malcolm, you think we need to do a formal appointment to that committee for grant purposes?
From the information I've got from Tricia, yes. And so, Tricia, I guess, let us know who your recommendations are to serve on that committee?
Absolutely. And you have a list of that Malcolm, already of that, the first ten that showed, that came and signed up? So we, we limited, we needed ten, so I had more than ten, but I just gave you a list of ten.
So can we make those appointments on our next regular meeting?
So at the September sixteenth meeting, the commissioners will make a formal appointment?
Excellent, thanks, guys.
Guys have any questions for Tricia? Well, thanks. Just a few minutes ahead of schedule.
How's that happen?
Sometimes it does.
I asked a couple people about a couple of these other ones, like these. I think this guy was up in, no. It might be Zundich, you know, just the one from Salt Lake, they had done a bunch of stuff up in.
Yeah, that's the one that don't have the ring on or it's got the other one.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Mob country in Montana, so I talked to some of the mob. Up ahead, so we can... So, I would move to go into executive session for litigation pursuant to lawmaking statute sixty-four, four, five, A, something.
Three.
Three.
Second, okay. Kid's been moved and seconded to move into executive session for litigation. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all was in favor, should we probably say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Um, good to. Want to go to any bit before listening?
Nope, we're on Wiologic.
Oh, we're way behind.
Never mind.
Is Jordan supposed to be in?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did you speak to meeting?
I gotta call my sister a little bit. I'm gonna take them home to us. She's like.
Morning, Jordan.
Morning, Jordan.
We've got some general updates close this morning.
I suppose so. Not many more than last time.
I see a lot of tags coming through where tickets went to.
Oh, yeah. There was also a setting that wasn't supposed to send the status changes, but, you know, we're just supposed to send the emails. Uh, the biggest one's probably the library stuff, the public network. Changed that stuff, removed the password. Limited the entire public zone to, um, 5 meg down and 20 mega.
What was it for?
The speed?
Yeah.
Whatever they could get. I mean, well, so the Wi-Fi itself technically I had limited to 10, I think 10 meg down and 3 mega per client. So if a hundred people connected, each one could get 10 and 3. Now the entire zone, no matter how many people are connected, can only get 50 meg down and 20 mega. Um, so, um, which I don't recall what their internet speed was with the old stuff. Um, I know it had been upgraded at one point in time because they did have issues. Um, 50 by 20, if there's a lot of people, it's not going to be the most pleasant experience, but it's a.
That's fine.
Yeah. It's.
By a lot of people, how many, how many is that?
20, 30. I mean.
Like 10's not, they're not even over 10.
Probably not, not unless, I mean, so, cause it is still limited to 10 and 3 per connection. So no, no one person can still use up all of it. The desktops, the public desktops in there can, but the Wi-Fi itself, no. So, I mean, you got, you know, essentially five, five people on the Wi-Fi and no, those can't use it all up. But you'd have to have like 10 people trying to all download a big file at the same time to cause any problems.
Right. So like the traffic outside that's automatically connecting, that's not going to have to reflect it because it jumps on, jumps off.
I mean, it'll impact the Wi-Fi performance. It won't be as nice as it would have been without it, but, I mean, it's not going to be the end of the world. It's just going to be a lot of connection and disconnect, handshakes that constantly go back and forth, which is handled mostly on the access point. I mean, it's going to try to get an IP address, which is going to come over to the firewall, you know, so there'll be, there'll be, there will be traffic with it, but it's pretty minimal. So, um, the only, my major concern is I have to, I'm going to have to watch the DHCP server for the IP addresses that it hands out and make sure that with the least time we don't end up running out because we've got hundreds of people driving by every day that could connect.
Steve could do that for you?
Please, you're hired. I pay in bubble gum now.
I pay in bubble gum.
You know? Like that, what was that, Trident commercial or something?
That's right.
Uh, that and, um, the, their newer computers are now fully onboarded onto the network to a joint active directory, so they have access to the, whatever the letters are, the O drive and the P drive. Uh, I'm on those four computers and then we had enough money to slip in a few, a few more computers for them at the end of last budget year.
That's the four computers that, I think in your.
In my email, yeah. And then those are the four that are kind of the last part. Um, I've tried to get ahold of that like six times and I can't get ahold of him and so I can't decommission the old network because the camera system stuff's still on there. I don't know if it's all closed loop or if he has cameras that are on the switch that's down in the basement. Um, I've called him, I think, four or five times, left him a message. I emailed him the other day and copied and mailed him and he still hasn't answered. Ju, he did answer Julie, but all he told Julie is that he would be up here with John eventually and from what she told me, it sounded like he didn't care to talk to me. Uh, so.
What's his name?
That Hoff, Wyoming State Safe and Lock.
Oh, he can't.
Yeah. I know, he's, he's busy.
He's on your agenda over there.
Yeah, I know. Yeah. Drive over there. Um, but, uh, um, in order, that's really the only thing that I can think of that is on the old network. So I can't shut that equipment off yet. So there might be Wi-Fi interference from the two running close to each other. So there could be some issues there. I can't make their admin network live yet because I did, but I didn't realize the old one actually has the same names that were fighting with each other. Might cause problems. So I renamed the, the new one because I don't have, uh, Wyoming Wireless did that stuff a long time ago and I don't have access to the old stuff and I'd have to factory reset it and reconfigure it. So this is a better temporary solution. Um, so with that, I'm just kind of waiting till whenever with that. Um, I don't know if there's another way to get ahold of him or somebody else wants to try and.
What's that, what are we specifically waiting on for?
The camera system over there on whether, you know, because it needs to be moved to the new network because it is on the network, at least on, at the minimum. But I also don't know if I turn off the old network equipment, how he has things connected or whatnot since I've, you know, never been involved with that. So if I turn stuff off, it may break, you know, five cameras might go offline or I just don't know. Um, I really, I mean, I'm happy to do the disconnecting and connecting and most of it, I just needed to answer the phone or call me so I can ask him the questions I need to ask him to know. Um, and then the next step would be turning off that old equipment, making sure everything still works. And then from there, John could come in and rip out all the old stuff.
You've been waiting on him to get back to you how long?
Uh, it's been weeks now.
Um, good to. Want to go a tiny bit before listening?
Nope, we're on Wiologic.
Oh, we're way behind, never mind.
Is Jordan supposed to be in?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, we're.
Just wait. Have you spoken to him?
I gotta call my sister. I'm gonna take him on the office. Like.
Morning. Morning, Jordan.
Morning, Jordan.
We've got some general updates for us this morning.
I suppose so. Not many more than last time.
I see a lot of tags coming through where tickets went to.
Oh, yeah. There was also a setting, I wasn't supposed to send the status changes, but, you know, we're just supposed to send the emails. The, the biggest ones probably the library stuff, the public network, changed that stuff, removed the password. Limited the entire public zone to, um, twenty meg down and twenty mega up.
What was it for?
The speed?
Yeah.
Whatever it could get. I mean, well, so the wifi itself technically I had limited to ten, I think, ten meg down and three mega per client. So if a hundred people connected, each one could get ten and three. Now the entire zone, no matter how many people are connected, can only get fifty meg down and twenty mega up. So, um, which I don't recall what their internet speed was with the old stuff. I know it had been upgraded at one point in time because they did have issues. Fifty by twenty, if there's a lot of people, it's not gonna be the most pleasant experience, but it's a.
That's fine.
Yeah. It's.
By a lot of people, how many, how many is that?
Twenty, thirty. I mean.
Like tens, not, they're not, you know, there's like there's ten.
Probably not, not unless, I mean, so, cause it is still limited to ten and three per connection, so no, no one person can still use up all of it. The desktops, the public desktops in there can, but the wifi itself, no. So, I mean, you got, you know, essentially five, five people on the wifi and no, those can't use it all up. But you'd have to have like ten people trying to all download a big file at the same time to cause any problems.
Right. So like the traffic outside that's automatically connecting, that's not gonna have to reflect it, cause it jumps on, jumps off.
I mean, it'll impact the wifi performance, it won't be as nice as it would have been without it, but, I mean, it's not gonna be the end of the world. It's just gonna be a lot of connection and disconnect, handshakes that constantly go back and forth, which is handled mostly on the access point. I mean, it's gonna try to get an IP address, which is gonna come over to the firewall, you know, so there'll be, there'll be, there will be traffic with it, but it's pretty minimal. So, um, the only, my major concern is I have to, I'm gonna have to watch the DHCP server for the IP addresses that it hands out and make sure that with the least time we don't end up running out because we've got hundreds of people driving by every day that could connect.
Steve could do that for you?
Please, you're hired. I pay in bubble gum now.
I pay in bubble gum?
You know. Like that, what was that, Trident commercial or something?
That's right.
Well, uh, that and, um, the, their newer computers are now fully onboarded onto the network. They're joined active directory, so they have access to the, whatever the letters are, the O drive and the P drive. Uh, I'm on those four computers and then we had enough money to slip in a few, a few more computers for them at the end of last budget year.
That's the four computers that, I think in your.
In my email, yeah, and then those are the four that are kind of the last part. Um, I've tried to get a hold of that like six times and I can't get a hold of him. And so I can't decommission the old network because the camera system stuff's still on there. I don't know if it's all closed loop or if he has cameras that are on the switch that's down in the basement. I've called him, I think, four or five times, left him a message. I emailed him the other day and copied Malcolm and he still hasn't answered. Ju, he did answer Julie, but all he told Julie is that he would be up here with John eventually and from what she told me, it sounded like he didn't care to talk to me. So.
What's his name?
That off, Wyoming State Safe and Lock.
Oh, but he can't.
Yeah. I know, he's, he's busy. Yeah, I know. Yeah. Drive over there. But, uh, um, in order, that's really the only thing that I can think of that is on the old network. So I can't shut that equipment off yet, so there might be wifi interference from the two running close to each other. So there could be some issues there. I can't make their admin network live yet, cause I did, but I didn't realize the old one actually has the same names that were fighting with each other. Might cause problems, so I renamed the, the new one, cause I don't have, uh, Wyoming Wireless did that stuff a long time ago and I don't have access to the old stuff and I'd have to factory reset it and reconfigure it, so this is a better temporary solution. So with that, I'm just kinda waiting till whenever with that. I don't know if there's another way to get a hold of him or somebody else wants to try and.
What's that, what are we specifically waiting on for?
The camera system over there, on whether, you know, because it needs to be moved to the new network, cause it is on the network, at least on, at the minimum. But I also don't know if I turn off the old network equipment, how he has things connected or whatnot, since I've, you know, never been involved with that. So if I turn stuff off, it may break, you know, five cameras might go offline or I just don't know. Um, I really, I mean, I'm happy to do the disconnecting and connecting and most of it, I just needed to answer the phone or call me so I can ask him the questions I need to ask him to know. And then the next step would be turning off that old equipment, making sure everything still works. And then from there, John could come in and rip out all the old stuff.
You've been waiting on him to get back to you, how long?
Uh, it's been weeks now. I can't, I can't remember exactly the first time I called him, I can probably look back at my home log, but it's been probably, I think the first time I called him was between three weeks, a month ago.
Which one, that or John?
Huh?
That or John?
That.
What's his obligation to come help?
I have no idea if he, he is under contract for that stuff or if it was a put in once or.
Who, John?
No, that.
Hmm.
I know Julie called him because that's how, actually how we found out about the wifi issue, the monitor that they have in the front at the counter for the cameras quit working cause it was trying to connect to the wrong wifi. And he said he was gonna come up in a few days, cause she's been able to get a hold of him multiple times, at least two.
Did you offer the bubble gum?
Nope.
Okay.
Uh, I did not, but.
See if I can't give him a call.
Okay. And if you need his number, I have, I can get it to you.
Yeah, just text it to me, please. Thank you.
Let me do it right now so I don't forget.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
No problem. And, uh, uh, then after that, obviously we'd be moving on to Gernsy, which Gernsy's obvi, not nearly as complex as things we're here, so.
Do we have any other systems with that that he needs to come work on?
Not that he needs to come work on, although, yeah. So, yeah, we, I mean, I don't know of any like pending work, but yeah, we have a lot of, that does all the door access control stuff, the camera system here.
Yeah, there's a few doors upstairs that are, have not been working for a number of months.
And actually the few that we wanted, like the dispatch radio room door.
Well, and the keypad outside of dispatch, we've had wires but no control box, I think for two years.
Dispatch?
And so there's other work to be done.
Let's see. Is it?
But.
Politely ask him or has he been, we've been waiting on him and he said he's been coming for a while?
I would ask Jim, those, those projects have been in Jim's court.
Okay.
Sorry. There you go. Otherwise I'd forget. So.
Thank you.
Um, that's kinda where the library stuff's at. But it's the, I can still, I don't, I can still do the four computers we have to put in without waiting for that. That's, I don't need to wait for him for that, but I do to decommission the red, the old network and for John to be able to come rip everything out. There's probably plenty John could come do, as long as there's just a couple little things that are left alone. And on it, that and John talk all the time, they work together, so.
Does that own his equipment or do we?
I'm pretty sure we do.
Okay.
Um, I can't imagine that he would.
Well, I, I didn't know what deal was put together then, I don't have any idea.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think there's anything that we have that he would own.
And you don't have any knowledge of a maintenance agreement or anything like that?
That would have been well outside of my, my wheelhouse.
Okay.
Um, Julie might know on that over there if there is any maintenance agreement. You know, but, you know, I generally just deal with that more on the tech side of things. I don't, I'm not really normally privy to any agreements with him. I think Jim deals more with, with him on that kinda stuff than, than I do. So. Yeah.
I'd expect that.
Let's see. Um, I talked to Malcolm the other day, I know we've talked about SLAs and stuff, this is, I think, the only other real general update deal I have. The service level agreement stuff, kinda the expectations, so people know what kinda timelines, you know, are trying to look at for stuff. I have a, I tweaked the communication memo and then added a whole section for that. I'm gonna get that over to Malcolm this week so that he can take a look at it first and then if we need to make any changes and then I'll make any changes and send it back out to, to everybody. It's just kind of a, we've just ran into a lot of the issues we've talked about before where, you know, users don't necessarily understand that there's issues more than just the issues they have going on and, and where, how to categorize those and what that kind of, the priority for that, you know, does it impact just the one user versus the multiple department or, you know? So, uh, that'll be coming soon. And I can, if you guys wanna see the draft of it, I'm happy to send it to you guys and Malcolm, if you wanna make a peek at it.
I hope you're successful.
Uh, but, uh, man, it just tweaked, tweaked a few things, cause we have had some communication issues. And people forget that, you know, we request things to be submitted in a certain way, so we actually receive them.
So you're looking at me?
You know? You know, so, as long as people like, I don't understand, or I don't, I don't understand, I don't mind sometimes, you know, if somebody texts me that is, has my cell, cause if you have my cell phone number, like you guys or Malcolm, if I get a text, as long as you guys understand, I might not answer you because I might not see it. You know, if you really need something, obviously the ticket system call the phone number. But, um, like with the library stuff, I don't know that Julie's ever gotten that communication memo, so I had talked to her on the phone, said, hey, let me know when you're done copying the stuff off, you know, just reply to that ticket. But she texted me and I didn't see that for a few days, cause I don't, my texts are a little often. So I just kinda modified some stuff, cleaned it up, made sure it was modern and added the SLA stuff so that people can, it's got a chart and some explanations of, you know, if it's just you that can't print, you know, the impact versus urgency, it should say here, here's the kinda timelines they were generally looking at for first response and expected resolution. So that people have that. Cause a lot of times it's been, well, I can't print, I need to print now, but we've got, you know, bigger issues, you know, a whole department with issues over here and just so that there can be a better understanding, like we've talked about before, so that'll be coming out very soon. The Spillman deal, this isn't gonna be a fun one for any of us. I had a meeting with David the Thursday and we looked at some stuff. I think it's something we could take over. In the conversation with him, he spends about ten to twenty hours a month in maintenance and making changes and uh, talking to Motorola with issues with support. There's always something broken with it, to be honest with you. And Motorola's slow. This last issue he's been working on, I hope gets resolved, um, before, you know, it transitions to anybody. It was, the, they're notorious for closing the issue out thinking it's fixed and then you can't just reopen the ticket anymore since Motorola acquired them and they changed the ticket system, you basically start a new ticket and you start all over again if they say they fixed it. So, um, there was one day I spent an hour and a half with David in his office just on this one little issue that's been going on for weeks now that they haven't fixed and that's a reoccurring thing. So there's a lot of time involved in, in maintaining it. There's, I think he said, in any twenty-four hour period, there's around twenty-five people that may use it or log into it. So obviously, you know, it's heavily used, there's a lot of people, you know, a lot of potential for issue because how important it is. So. If we are to take it over, obviously because of the amount of time, I would like to not include it in our normal contract cause obviously it would be outside of the scope of the contract anyways, but I wouldn't like, I would like to make it a separate software management contract if, if we do go that route, so that it's completely different. So it's something that, you know, we all can evaluate again in say six months and make sure that it's still the best fit or, or, or if it should move somewhere else. The problem is, I'm talking to, um, David and I talked to Malcolm about it a little bit, because of the information that's in it and the access and sense, you know, it's super sensitive information, obviously, it's been, you know, a concern of why we're at the place we're at already, partially anyways. I can't think of any other logical person to take care of it.
This was gonna ask you.
Yeah, Malcolm and I talked about it, uh, David and I talked about it. The people that are at a level that they, in theory, could have that access either aren't going to have any interest in taking care of it or maybe shouldn't be taking care of it, just because the level of knowledge isn't there to be able to. There's also a lot of issues and I know it's been a point of concern, you know, for ev, for every, well, maybe not you guys, cause obviously you didn't know about it, but there's, there's things that, because it's used by multiple agencies, things have changed over the years a lot and they, and the way that it's set up. And in talking to David, because of issues that were had with the software itself and stuff in the past, those permissions have changed a lot. And for one, if I were to take it over, I think those need to be reevaluated. So I think there's gonna be a lot of time involved after, for one, learning the proper way to take care of it, which is also going to include a lot of time. Cause in talking to David, there's, I'd have to learn the workflow of, you know, how the PD uses it, how detention uses it, how the SO uses it, how dispatch uses it, so that I'm able to go in and make some of the changes that need to be made sometimes, like changes to fields in the forms and, and whatnot. There's a lot of knowledge that has to be had in order to be able to make the right choices with it. And there's gonna be a lot of, it's gonna be a lot of talking that's gonna have to be done between agencies in order to figure out how those permissions need to fall, what they need access to, what kind of sharing needs to be done. And one of the other big things for me is obviously because there are multiple agencies involved, how we decide to take care of and handle those requests, what kind of essentially, you know, time expectations, you know, am am I gonna be expected to answer phone calls from all twenty of those users in the middle of the night and be available to them in, you know, fifteen minutes in order to fix these issues?
Sounds about right.
I know that could very well be the expectation, but I think there's.
Do it the other way.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of discussion to be had about it. And to an extent, I've been having a little bit of a hard time determining what kind of cost might be associated with that, because there's a lot of unknowns. Based off of time and amount of users in it. Um, I, the kinda rough number that I've been looking at is, I mean, on average, ten to twenty, the very beginning, it's gonna be a lot more, I think you're gonna need to treat it like the library and do that part of it like a project with onboarding and, and everything. But if we're, I'd say the middle number's probably fifteen hundred a month for us, if we're gonna be spending upwards of, of, you know, twenty hours potentially, you know, maybe ten on the low side, that cuts our hourly, general, normal hourly rate and puts it down the middle. But also, if we're gonna be expected, you know, to be available to any number of those twenty-some users for any issue that they may wanna call for, you know, in the middle of the night, obviously, it's gonna be on the higher side if I'm gonna get woken up, you know, regularly for that.
Have you got any contacts at CI or anybody like that that David could give you, you know, FBI, state, you know, the fed level that would give you any kind of an indication as far as, okay, there's a problem, you got thirty minutes to fix it because of the booking or this or that?
Oh, so there's, there are certain things that I know, that I know of with Spillman, like, uh, the NCIC queries can only be down for fifteen minutes. They do have a backup with OpenFox, so it doesn't have to necessarily be in Spillman, but that's how they send warrants over. There are a few things, to, to my knowledge, there's nothing with Spillman itself that me, that says, cause it's been down for almost forty-eight hours before. And it causes massive impact, but, um, one of my big concerns is, is making sure that the expectation is, is set and agreed upon because there are other agencies involved and I know there's been a lot of tension with things in, in relation to the inter-agency, um, you know, stuff. I think it's not a horrible idea at all to have essentially a impartial third party be the administrator of Spillman rather than, you know, somebody in a department, but.
Got a question for you. You sick of buying your own health insurance yet?
The thing is, no, cause I don't do it. But, uh.
You're someone who gets full-time position in the county.
But you know, it's, obviously it's been something that's, you know, been, been discussed in, I mean, in terms of how I was looking at calculating costs, it partially is on, you know, how many roughly, you know, there's roughly a hundred and seventy, if you're working a forty-hour per week, which I have. Obviously, you know, and, you know, so you're talking maybe twenty hours out of that, plus, you know, the rest of the time I spend for you guys, you know, it's obviously the majority is definitely for you guys. It's, it's been something that obviously I know is on the table to discuss. There's, there's a few things, I don't know if it's the ideal time, you know, in terms of obligations, you know, that the Wiologic has to the bank and whether or not it's gonna be a great idea for me to take those back on personally or whatnot, but. It's not something that's off the table, I'll put it that way.
I think, I think this is a discussion that we probably should have had a long time ago as far as having it really done with C and the administrator, because even if he really takes it over.
So that's another thing.
This is Jordan.
That's a, that's a, with Spillman, that's sort of, that is super important also, but it's quite a bit of a different animal in terms of, you know, how that's done, because somebody else has to know that. Like with the rest of the stuff I do, you know, I have, I have a bunch of information, kind of a shit history fan, for lack of better terms, you know, packet for, you know, say Richard, cause he's, he's my backup, he knows that something happens to me and he's more than willing to, you know, to step in and, you know, and help. You know, he's the one that if there's an emergency when I'm gone, you know, if I leave, you know, he takes care of things for me. But with Spillman, if he doesn't know Spillman. I talked to David briefly about it and it's been his understanding from talking to Motorola that the way the permission set works in order to be able to, to have the level of access required to make a lot of these changes is essentially the top level of access. Because my idea was is that maybe over a period of time, depending on how things go, cause I know there's been a lot of between-agency discussions about what the future looks like with Spillman and, and whatnot. Uh, I would really like to see power users. You know, say, okay, well, I manage the very top level of things, we'll say, you know, Brad or maybe somebody Brad assigns over at the police department manages adding, removing their own users, setting the pa, resetting the passwords. The understanding is though currently, the only way for him to do that would also give him access to modify any other user that is at Spillman.
What level of security do these people would require for somebody that's adding and they looking at this stuff that sensitivity is pretty high?
Oh, yeah, it's, yeah, to give that permission just to modify users is, yeah, it's up there. Like the, the amount of access to manage the full suite of software gives access to view any and all NCIC queries that dispatches made from the beginning of time, whatever's in the log files.
This is a little bigger than a password on library.
Yes. Yeah, this is, you know, a database of information that a lot of people would never see in their entire lives. So, you know, you know, it obviously, it's got social security numbers for the people that have warrants, you know, you get, it gives you permissions to be able to go read any and all call reports that were made, regardless of, you know, their sensitivity for juveniles, for adults, you know? Very, very sensitive information. So it's not something, you know, in my talk with like David, you know, we're like, well, you know, cause secretary position that they have over there managed some of this. I personally don't think so, because for one, there could be turnover and it's super sensitive information. We already obviously have an agreement with the county for confidentiality, because of my relationship with dispatch for stuff already. You know, I've already with the, uh, uh, SGA's stuff, I have actually have course that, they just sent me out that long ago I have to do to actually be certified, it used to be sign a piece of paper, now I have to spend a few hours taking their course.
The, the path forward seems right. I don't see any other way around getting, like you said, uh, somebody who's not in the middle of it. And there's some, we already have a relationship with, it seems right to me.
And that's part of the, and part of the reason I would like to do it is sometimes a completely separate agreement and understanding is so that we can revisit it in six months and. is so that we can revisit it in six months and say, all right, well, now we can put some power users in place, or I don't want to do it anymore.
There's a joke in there, but it's too soon.
Yeah.
And I think it also gives us the ability to bring in all the users and say, hey, we're going to make an agreement with you.
Yes, and I think that's going to be, I think that's-
Split the cost that way.
And yeah, so keep it completely different, because I think that it's going to be very important for me to be able to, to, to be the administrator, to do it properly.
I agree.
We're going to have to involve everybody that uses Spillman.
I agree.
As much as I don't have extra time, you know, I already talked to David, you know, about it, and he completely agreed. It's going to be important that I go sit and spend some time with detention and watch how they do their job and how they use Spillman, specifically in relation to how they do Spillman, I don't want to know the rest of it.
What crime are you going to commit?
I don't know, I haven't decided yet. Might be a good one.
You're thinking this is an agreement totally separate from your current contract? So I think, get something drafted?
Yes.
Into us for consideration?
I think the only way to do that is going to be to have a bit, because obviously it's going to be cost, we're going to have to have more discussion between agencies, so that I can-
I think we're a good place for that.
I mean, before I try to get that over, can we maybe schedule something to bring in your NCPD and some of the departments and Wieland PD to try to set the, because I need to set the expectations of the time portions of things in order to be able to get you guys a proper agreement.
I, I think that everything being broken right now is probably a pretty good time to start building something that we can actually use, you know what I mean? So let's get it together, let's get the guys talking, and this is what they want also, so.
Or should I just go talk to them? Maybe, I don't know, because I, I didn't know if you guys wanted to be involved in that portion of the discussion or not.
I know the spell Spillman.
Are you sure? Two L's or one L?
I'm talking, we, we had a turn here, but I think if you talk to entities to gather information so you can get to a point where you're comfortable to draft an agreement, that's where they-
That's where we bring you guys back in. I can get you guys a rough draft of the agreement?
Yes, please.
And then whatever that agreement is with you will inform their agreements with other towns.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So I should be reaching out to Brad and whoever, whoever be at each. I just wanted to make sure, I don't want any, I'm discussing too soon also. We'll leave it at that.
That's a good starting point.
Yeah, so just want to make sure you guys are comfortable with the direction we had with it. So, I, obviously, it's not like we have a ton of time, so I will, I'm assuming you guys would like me to put some focus on that to figure it out. Obviously, I won't leave you high and dry either way if we don't have an agreement by the time David's no longer around and somebody has to do it. The only other per, I, I'm the only other person I know, other than him, that actually already has the permissions to be able to do it, so.
I would be comfortable with you providing that service and paying you for your service.
So, I will do my due diligence, and I will, I'll spend some more time with David. And he's agreed, he's, he wants to make sure that there's a good transition of that, to provide a lot of information, to give me the best chance. There is a course that can be taken also, which is something I'd like to look into. Obviously, it's probably not feasible right this moment, but you can get certified to be an administrator for Spillman. It's not necessary, but it could be helpful. Yes, we'll look at, I'll look into that also.
Probably fourteen slides of Motorola hotline.
Yeah, it's, now that it's Motorola, that's probably not fun at all. But, so. Okay, I think that sounds good. I'm, I'm comfortable with moving forward that way if you guys are, so I will get it started. I'll reach out to the other agencies and, and chat with them, and then I'll get some sort of rough draft agreement going. And
Go from there?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we just need a motion for the Motorola service agreement?
Yeah, and the agreement, this is based off a couple of weeks ago, about a month ago now, when you talked.
Five years.
It, the consensus with the town of Burnsy, town of Wieland, was that you'd pursue a five-year agreement with the E-citation capability. And-
And it looks like that one also includes mapping.
Yes. And then, so this agreement has the sheriff on it, so you'll have to provide him authorization. Since this is in a budget that you control, you'll need to provide authorization to him to sign it.
Is that how that works?
Yep.
So has Doug looked over it? Thought that we're going to change it anyways?
There was one argument point we were told, no.
So I would move to approve the agreement with Motorola Solutions and authorize Sheriff Russell to sign.
Kid's been moved and seconded to approve the agreement with Motorola Solutions and authorize Sheriff Russell to sign. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Just a side note on that, just so you guys know, the mapping agreement, E-citation and mapping don't currently exist, so there would be a lot of implementation in that, just so you know.
Let's get through another two weeks.
Just want to have that on your radar so that you're not surprised when, like, oh, now there's, you know, fifty hours an entire month that was spent on Spillman instead of twenty.
Thanks, Jordan.
You betcha. Thank you, guys.
You're sitting in a different spot because I halfway trust you, Jordan. That's a lot better than everybody else.
I appreciate that.
You're halfway there.
Here we have Lucinda on our agenda. Good morning.
Good morning.
Lucinda, you got something new for us this morning?
What?
You got something new, or?
New and used.
New and used.
I would focus on the new.
Thank you, Jim. You may recall that nearly one month ago, after the August fifth county commissioners meeting, Ian Jolovich, in his role as county planner, and I met to discuss going forward with the proposed changes to the wind energy conversion system regulations that Jill and I and others had been working on for several weeks. I was curious as to how the whole operation would move forward, because I have never been to a planning and zoning meeting nor a workshop. I proposed to the planner that when we present the regulation changes to the planning and zoning board, that we can have our experts, people who've really researched almost every aspect of the wind, solar, best energy systems present, so that they could present short, informative talks to give background facts grounded in science to help the planning and zoning members understand why we are suggesting particular changes. Ian said he would ask the planning and zoning board if that would be possible. Ian did not in any way reject the idea. I do not know if he ever followed through with the planning and zoning board about my proposal. I do know that during the first workshop, there were no such opportunities for short talks by experts.
Is this, is this your statement, or is this, what is this statement?
Excuse me, this is my time, reclaiming my time.
This is not a public meeting.
Excuse me, I'm on the agenda, Ian. Can I finish?
Understand, but this is our meeting. I'm asking if this is your statement, or what is this?
I don't understand your question.
This is, this is your recollection of events?
Can you let me finish? Thank you. Perhaps in the next workshop, workshop, such presentations can be accommodated. Ian, the planner, was keen to make me aware that the proposed regulation changes should not in any way appear to be arbitrary or capricious. I believe he was concerned that if they were arbitrary and capricious, there could be serious legal consequences. I even took notes on that point. Furthermore, Planner Jolovich stated that we needed to trust his ability to be a good negotiator for making deals. My point was that if the regs were up to date, the county commissioners would have the proper tool to guide them through the permitting process. They wouldn't need to worry about their negotiating skills, but rather rely on the rules for the county. Wyoming Statute eighteen five two oh one A calls on the county commissioners to promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the county as they make their numerous decisions regarding the unincorporated areas of the county. Keeping that in mind, let me lay out why our regulations are neither arbitrary nor capricious. So how is arbitrary and capricious defined? The arbitrary and capricious standard is a legal benchmark used by courts to review the actions and decisions of administrative agencies, ensuring that they are not based on random choice or personal whim. This standard emphasizes that agency actions must be grounded in reasoned analysis and supported by substantial evidence, helping to ensure fairness and accountability in the administrative rulemaking process. In short, arbitrary and capricious means it comes from a whim. Remember Anthony Fauci's six-foot social distance rule? An excellent example of something arbitrary and capricious. Totally without science, chosen from thin air, and made up. I contend that our suggestions for regulation changes are based on fact, not opinion, based on scientific evidence, much of which we've brought to you in the last few months, in an effort to be fair and reasonable to protect all citizens of the county and based on the historic performance from energy companies. None of our proposed changes to the regulations should be considered arbitrary or capricious. I heard recently that one of the landowners claimed that we included a twelve-mile setback that absolutely would be arbitrary and capricious. Perhaps the landowner might be thinking of the requirement we included whereby the parent company, applicant, owner, and operator would be required to notify in writing everyone who lives within twelve miles of the project because of the adverse health effects from infrasound. This is neither capricious nor arbitrary because of what the research tells us about infrasound. In fact, we know that infrasound travels twelve miles during the day, but up to fifty-five miles at night. And if the known adverse health effects can affect even ten percent of the population, even in Platte County, reaching out fifty-five miles or into neighboring counties, that would be harming a great many people. Requiring letters to go to everyone within fifty-five miles also would not be arbitrary nor capricious. That requirement could and should be amended to reflect the science. What about fire protection? The current regs state a single line, "All WEX projects shall have a defensible space for fire protection." That's all it says. Who's responsible? It doesn't say. We have learned about the possible fire hazards should a tower be hit by lightning, for example. And what we've proposed for the wind regulations would also work for solar and best, where there are even greater risks of fires and thermal runaways. And if an energy company is not required to submit a fire mitigation plan by current regs, then I do not think that our comprehensive suggestions dealing with what we expect of any wind, solar, or best developer are arbitrary or capricious, as long as they are always about the safety and welfare of all the citizens of our county. Switching gears to decommissioning. If I've understood what you all have said in previous meetings, and, and I'm paraphrasing here, quote, quote, this is kind of what you've been saying. It's up to the landowner and the energy company. I don't care if the owner wants to leave five hundred tons of concrete in the ground at decommissioning. That's the landowner's problem. When I read Wyoming Statute eighteen five five oh three, Roman numeral ten, where it states that before a permit is granted, the energy company shall provide a site and facility reclamation and decommissioning plan, which indicates the planned life of the facility and the means by which the facility and its site will be decommissioned and reclaimed at the end of the facility's life, and which certifies that any owner of land within the facility and its site, who is not the applicant, has been consulted in development of the reclamation and decommissioning plan. There's more to that statute. But it is clear that this plan must come before you. Our suggestions leave no doubt, I'm talking about our suggestions in the planning regulations, leave no doubt about how the agricultural farmland, prime farmland, must be returned to its original state. And importantly, that no damaged or decommissioned turbine blades and tower structures shall be disposed of in Platte County. These proposed decommissioning plans are not arbitrary nor capricious. They are fair. And most importantly, they protect the health, safety, and general welfare of everyone in the county. Due to past behaviors of energy companies, other Wyoming counties have created robust decommissioning regulations from which we have borrowed the best and most detailed in order to protect Platte County. We will not be left with stranded assets across the farmland, no rusted turbine towers, no concrete foundations, and for solar and best, no toxic waste dumps either. And I, I want to make sure, before I go on, that you have this handout. This handout documents what all too often is concerned, has occurred with parent companies that create subsidiaries, subsidiaries of subsidiaries, and then they go bankrupt, and they, no one's held, can hold them, has been able to hold them to the promises that were originally made. So we've tried to rectify that in the regulations. And let me mention just one more regulation that might seem arbitrary until you do the research. I could talk about these all day long, but I will limit myself to one more. Within the setbacks, letter J, under setbacks, where it states the following, "Physical placement of each WEX shall not be closer to any other WEX than fifteen rotor diameters." When I wrote, when we added that, I, I had to look up the information on that. I thought, oh, why is that important? It's important for a lot of reasons. So here's another, this is an excellent summary of why wind turbine separation distance really matters. It clearly articulates, that article clearly articulates numerous reasons for the distance and the consequences when developers use shorter distances between turbine towers. From increased wear and tear on the components that increase early failure rates to health effects from, yep. effects from, yep, you guessed it, increased infrasound and frequency noise. Once again, this seemingly capricious and arbitrary rule is not bad at all. It is based on scientific research, and this is from all over the world, not just American researchers, but this is from all over the world. I trust that you will look at the proposed changes to the regulations that we assembled for what they are: fair, reasonable, based on fact and science, and meant to be what is best for all citizens of the county. A constant theme I keep hearing from you is your fear of being sued. Let me tell you about fear. We lived in communist Czechoslovakia from 1980 to 82. That system was all about fear. And whenever the people with the power to make any kind of decision had to decide, it went something like this: "Well, maybe we can. Well, maybe we can't. So let's not." That's how they decided things. I hope that you will read the regulations with new insights, realizing that they are not arbitrary nor capricious. They really don't say that you can't put up a single wind turbine in Platte County, even if I wish that were the case. I hope that you will depend on the revised, updated regulations as a necessary tool to decide what is fair and right for everyone in Platte County. Those are my, those are my notes about capricious and arbitrary, but I just, in case, in case-
So you've, you've used most of your time, and we have Mr. Milcher here.
I timed myself, and it was 11.05 minutes, Stephen, I think I was getting 15.
So you started at 10:59, and it's now 11:15, that's 16 minutes.
Let me just tell you about this article that appeared yesterday. I just want to make sure-
Finish up, please.
-I haven't missed it. It's called "A Rancher Says Wind/Solar Don't Impact Land Anymore Than Cell Towers and Oil Rigs." And I know, I know from the last workshop that one commissioner in the hallway spent a lot of time talking to this particular rancher who bought a farm who lives near Chilwell. So in case you haven't seen it, you need to go to Calway State Daily and read about Paul Norfleet, who's partnered with Nextera. And by the way, at the current sighting, he, the solar farm and the best are situated on his property. So just, just to let you know, it's a great article by Jackson Walker. Thank you.
Thanks. Good morning, Dan.
Morning.
Hi, Danny.
Good morning, good morning.
You wanted to visit about the Johnsons Farm subdivision.
Yeah. I didn't realize I was on a timer, but feel free to interrupt my time any, anytime you want. So this is, I don't know how much history you want on this, but basically, what I'm here to ask your permission, I guess, is to get a replat drawn, this replat redrawn, because at the time, back in 2007, I believe, was, you know, I don't want to go, unless you want to hear all the history, there was, there was another 10-foot taken off of this 80 acres, and I'd like to revert that back to the original 20-foot easement for Palmer Canyon Road.
From the, from the center line?
Yeah, I think it's from the center line.
So the easement's 40 feet?
Yep.
Yeah, the majority of the Palmer Canyon Road right-of-way is 40 feet, 20 feet either side of the section line, and then, but in talking to Dan, you know, he's going to have to hire a surveyor, he's going to have some expense in this, and so before he does that, just get kind of a gut feeling from you of-
What is the-
-how necessary you think that extra-
And all this stemmed from that sale of that-
Right.
Where you bought the farm but not the house in the beginning, and, okay.
Yeah. You guys might remember Larry Johnson and his sister Jared Davis. She's the one who wanted to keep the house and, and sell me the farm, and so we had to go through this whole replat thing and subdivision thing. Yeah, I don't, yeah.
What's the, what's the easement now? We're going from 30 feet to 20 feet?
Yeah, I'd like to take it back to the original 20.
Okay.
And there's an-
I remember that.
There's an additional 20 feet on the south side of that section line. So the total's 40. So whatever, so planning and zoning for a while on Palmer Canyon, anytime somebody plotted something, they were extending the right-of-way to be a 60-foot wide right-of-way. And it looks like they were just doing it kind of piecemeal as they went, as people subdivided.
Ultimately, if the road had to be wide, then we'd have to have an easement for the total.
For everybody.
Yeah.
Anyhow, I didn't, I didn't think it was quite fair at the time, and I still don't, and if you guys are willing, I'd spend the money to replat it.
I, I agree with you.
100%.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So it's all part of that real estate deal so that they could get their five acres?
Yeah.
And why should you be penalized for that now? It's yours. I mean, it should go back to you.
Right. Well, since I have time, hopefully my time's not up yet. When we first did this, there was five acres, because that was like the rule, and then ultimately, I ended up owning the whole thing anyhow, again, and we did a realignment of property, and that's why we had to replat it down to the 2.7, say, 7 acres. Because it was originally a five acre, you can kind of see, if you scroll down there, Malcolm, you can kind of see where the original five acres was, which was actually out into my field at the time. And so when I ultimately owned the whole thing, we had it, the boundary redrawn and put basically instead of a lot, that's back into the farm, so. So yeah, and I talked, Jim Gru did this, he's gone, of course, y'all know that. I talked to Stiles, they might be able to do something, just if the plat was filed, which it is, I checked this morning, it is filed here. So they may be able to take that plat and just kind of redraw this line, I think, I hope, so. Shouldn't, I hope it didn't cost me what it did in the beginning.
Shouldn't be a lot of brain damage if all of it redrawn line.
That's, in a nutshell, guys, thanks.
I think that it straightens up our mess also. Well, I think they just gave you permission to spend your own money.
Okay.
Right.
Interesting. Now I know where Jordan spends all his time, he won't come and work for us at the district.
Yeah. Yeah. You got to compete pretty hard for his time.
Who do you guys use at the district for your-
We were him, but we're actually looking at somebody else.
Like a contractor or hiring somebody?
Yeah, I couldn't tell you all the details. I don't, I just know we're looking at somebody else, so.
Yeah.
And Jordan's great. We're getting off subject, but he's hard to get over. And I can see why he's kind of with you guys, which is good. He's smart. So anyhow, that's it. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Eric. Go ahead. So what is the next step? If I get them to redraw it, do I have to come back to the commissioners or-
So once, once Stiles has it done, you know, we'll get it to me, we'll get signatures.
Then we, we just have to sign it, like we have one here today to sign it.
Oh, perfect. All right. Appreciate it. Thanks, you guys.
See you.
Thank you.
Good day, Ben.
This is Lake Shore Track, just third filing.
Yeah, this was, you may not remember this one, it was a long, long time ago. This is when Joe Dumont was planner, and for the life of me, can't remember the folks' name, but just a replat, basically a lot line adjustment.
So remember, you received five?
Yeah.
Let me go grab those real quick. I just thought I brought them in. And he's got five, you guys can go with this. I gotta go find out if they're transported or not. Did you rank your, have a ranking for these?
Yeah.
I will be moving in five minutes. Okay.
Yeah.
You'll be back. I just need to find out if she's transported or not. I can tell you who my top and my bottom are.
I can tell you my top and bottom are, but there was a competition for the bottom. I called some, Randy's brother was down, he dealt with the contractors, was doing a lot of stuff up in U, mob country, you know, I'll figure out who they are. Not necessarily somebody who, sorry, had to direct traffic when I went up there. Jeb just stepped out, he'll be back in five minutes. I was just going to say, when I read them, I thought they all met the qualifications according to your RFQ. Two admittedly are puzzling to me why they submitted, but one of those two, I think, would be very interesting to interview anyway, just to understand their capacity. They can do the work, clearly, but understand their capacity to be a GC. And then three obviously are already general contractors. And we talked about a little bit at the last meeting, that the, this process, really the most important part is your relationship with your contractor needs to be solid. So in your interview phase, you'll ask, you can ask questions about pricing, of course, which is obviously important, but relationship matters a lot in this.
Then we have to interview two.
It said you, nothing says a maximum, of course. Minimum's just two.
Okay. If I had, based on the relationship with the contractor, I would like to interview Sampson for sure.
Sampson for sure.
Yeah.
They already know what's here, and we had a good working relationship with them when we did the growth house, so. They were great to work with.
Repeat last time, Sampson, Grow House? No, that's not my official.
Based on my experience with Grow House, they were at the bottom.
That's where they are for me as well.
Yeah.
Maybe the tie for second, third, and fourth. Actually, second and third were tied, fourth was-
I don't know if they're a general. Did you grab that same thought process, Malcolm?
Well-
On Greenwich?
So the more I read that one, the more interested I got.
Yeah.
Where I had the same question, I don't know, I'd be interested to have them interview to see their capacity to be a GC and talk about these projects more in depth, but if you read them, it looks like everything we're asking for, they've done.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, I'm seeing that part, but I just, I just don't see anything that says, you know, "I'm a state-certified general contractor, commercial." I don't see that. But yet, you look at, you know, what they've done.
It depends, I don't know how much of it are in, you know, you can make a small portion of a project look like a big part of it. And that goal is to interview them on September 16th, so.
I mean, you can talk to them, I guess, you know?
To be honest with you, we have to have two. If I'm being fair, we have to consider whether they're local or within the state or without the state. They give a 5% preference. That, to me, is a big 5%. And so we are interviewing them, and they might be the selection for the second, but I don't know if it's very likely that they'll be the, they have to push a pretty strong case to beat the other interviewee.
Because they're out of state?
More or less.
Because you don't think they'll make the 5%?
I don't, I think that they, I don't think that they're better than the other one by
Well, then, once you send the money out of state, it never comes back.
Yeah. So I don't know how you do that politely, but.
What do you do with these guys?
Interesting. Yeah.
Yeah, I think they all have the ability to do it.
They were my number two.
Yeah.
Sampson and Ben Ewing were the two that I had on top. HydroTech, Grim Dish, Grow House. And that one's a little bit about, one of my favorite sayings is, "You're always on a job interview." I think I got mine mixed up. Yeah. I think HydroTech was the one I was talking about.
You can get those guys.
Oh, yeah, yeah. HydroTech's the one that I was thinking is-
Right.
-more and more intrigued, it's done the work, sorry.
Yeah, just talking to the guys when they were here, and we've been on the tour, I spent some time with them, and felt like they were pretty comfortable with what we were going to do.
And all five were here. So that's good news.
Yeah, I talked to several of them, and we were just too late around.
Yeah, I looked through these things, and then I went back through them, I looked through them again, then I come up with portions, and I went back through them, looked through them again, and.
We can interview as many as we'd like.
I say keep two.
Just because I feel guilty. Just because I feel guilty. So you're two is Sampson and Ben Ewing? I'm good with that. Are you Sampson and Ben Ewing? Yeah, yeah, I am. I guess there's nothing that says if we have an interview with them and don't get a good feeling about it, we can't call them and say, "Well..."
Yeah, it's just, it's our timeline.
You know, the thing with Hydrotech, they, you know, everything they talk about, just about all these big jobs, is historic machinery, recreation, tuck-pointing, stone repair, and all that, and again, you know, who's to say that whoever gets this, don't sub to them to do that part of it?
I actually brought that up when they were here.
Yeah.
You know, that, they're still interested. So what's your thought for not interviewing that one, Hydrotech?
They're out of state.
Okay, out of state. That's the one you were saying you don't see being 10%? Okay. Well, and some other stuff.
You know, any good general on a project this size or even smaller, what he's going to do is, you know, when he goes to get himself selected, he's going to do the screening and he's going to do the background because he doesn't want the headache. And so, you know, they're going to lean out and reach out to people who are basically designed to do one thing and do it well. I mean, you're not going to hire a sheet rock guy to go put tuck-pointing in the brick. I mean, they're not going to do that. So, you know, and that's up to them. But, you know, just because one of these other guys isn't selected, that wouldn't mean that the one that is wouldn't reach out to them to perform part of it.
So do you have a motion to select? I'm going to use to select Sampson Construct. Let me get their names real quick in front of me. I move to invite Sampson Construction and Ben Ewing Construction Incorporated for interviews for the courthouse Phase 2 project.
My second, that. Okay, it's been moved and signed into invite Sampson Construction and Ben Ewing Construction to do interviews for the Phase 2 construction project for the courthouse. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Can I get my files back? Yes, absolutely. I mean, technically, they're going to... They just go in there. Somebody needs to... Is this something you can handle right now? Nope.
Might be a busy meeting next time.
Yes.
Yeah, it sounds like it.
I imagine so. It's 19th.
Any other items for today?
I'd like to make a note, actually, a clarification between the board. This is not a public hearing. Our meetings are not a public hearing. They're not open to the public. They're, the public is invited to come. The First Amendment does not apply unless it's a public hearing required by law, right? So when you ask to be on our schedule for a meeting, we say yes or no. We are not mandated to say yes to everything. So that's just a point I wanted to make clear since there was some confusion between me and you during your time. You've been watching too much AOC on C-SPAN to reclaim your time here. Follow me.
Is it right to interrupt discussion?
It is our meeting.
Does that make it right?
I don't care if it's right or wrong.
I know you don't care.
My point is, is that, is that this is our meeting, open to the public.
Right.
And that's all.
So I don't quite understand your point, I guess.
Common courtesy goes a long ways.
What did you want me to do? What, did...
I just wanted to make, I just wanted, I don't want anything from you. I just wanted to make very clear, this is not what you think it is. To me, it's not. And I'm speaking for myself only, but it's frustrating when you get that much pushback for just little common courtesy on our end, my end, specifically.
You're getting it?
And I, that's, that's fine.
Was there something in what I said that you don't agree with? Is that what you're getting at?
No.
No. It's, it's, well, I think I was to talk about the wind/solar/best project and the regulations, and that's, that was my point. My point was, you had brought up in a meeting about arbitrary and capricious, that the regs, and you said, and I agree with you, they should not be arbitrary nor capricious. And I understand, I thought I understood that. I thought that was your point in our meeting, and I wrote it down.
The beauty of the system we're working under, like the US Constitution, is I don't have to have you understand or agree with me. I can have my opinion, you can have yours, and that's where this will be. So appreciate you guys taking, appreciate you guys taking the time to come in.
What's that?
I appreciate you guys taking your time to come in. Thank you.
And we appreciate being able to speak to you about those things because they're important to the whole county. And in my belief, this is one of the biggest decisions you will ever have to make as a county commissioner.
I doubt that.
Do we have any further business? We will consider ourselves adjourned. Thank you.
Quick question, how'd you guys...